Well, as is normal for a meeting, we would rise and salute the flag, please.
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So before we start, I think it would be logical for Kristin to review the process that we have had so far, so that both you here in the hall, as well as those at home, would understand how complicated this process has been.
So, Mr. Girard, we are running late and we were supposed to start our interview with Mr. Callahan at 5:30, so I would like to get started.
All right, well, maybe we can do that at the end.
Sure.
Very good. Brian, please.
Mr. Callahan, come on up. Welcome, welcome. Nice to see you again.
Thank you. Good to see you all.
Yep, you want to start us off?
Hi, I'm going to ask the first question. I'll start us off. Can you please tell us what areas for growth or opportunities for improvement have you identified within the Westboro Public School? What are some of the ways your leadership will improve and lift the district to new heights?
Thank you, and thank you, you know, all for the process. As I've indicated in my email to all of you, I've been very impressed and, you know, grateful to be, you know, to be involved. It's been a rigorous process. It's been thoughtful and it's been, you know, very, very informative. In terms of opportunities for improvement in the Westboro Public Schools, I do have, I do have kind of a vision for if I was to become your superintendent that would include a very clear articulation of what our values, norms, and collective responsibility is across all characteristics of our school department. I think that the strategic plan that I've worked very closely with the administrative team on over the last several years is outstanding. It's detailed, it is strategic, truly strategic, it measures what it is that we feel is of great importance in the Westboro Public Schools. But one clear area that I would like to work with the school department on from pre-K to 22 and the stakeholders at home, because it's a, it's a vision, it's a we vision, it's for everybody. It's not just mine, it's just not the school departments. And that would include a very clear way to run all of the goals and all of the curriculum improvements and all the academic standards and all of the things that are in that strategic plan, and make sure that we have a through line that runs from every school and every grade level that touches upon our students. That through line, to be very clear, would help, I think, tighten what we do at every single grade level, so that there's clear articulation of alignment of our curriculum, of our instructional practices, of our core values and beliefs, and I think it would strengthen our culture. I think that by fostering a culture of trust within our school district, you empower teachers, administrators, you engage students, you engage more collaboratively parents and families. I think we can begin to innovate our programming with confidence, with clarity, and ultimately create an environment that is conducive for every student to thrive. So that would be a clear opportunity for me, is to look at our strategic plan, reach out to our stakeholders, make it a plan that involves feedback from all stakeholders, and make sure that that through line runs from pre-K to 22. My, if I could follow up, because there's one aspect of that question that I wanted to get to as well. My leadership, I think my style of leadership is one of intentionality and one of consensus building, and one that finds feedback very effective. And I think a leadership style, because I've spent time in the classroom, I've spent time in a building as an administrator, working with teachers, working with students, and working with families directly on these very specific pieces, that that would give me a great insight into how to build it through all grade levels.
Thank you. I'm going to ask the next question. Several of our recent superintendents have been deeply involved in our community. What other key roles and responsibilities might a superintendent of schools take on in the town? Please share two and how these roles relate to student success.
Okay, so I think if I could clarify two new roles or any two roles.
I think they don't need to be new roles, but just like in addition to superintendent of schools, like what could you do in the community that would lead to student success?
Okay, got you. So, it's a great question. I love service. I love volunteering. I think in fact in the fall, I was a member of a rowing team that raised money for a civic group in town. Yakub, I think you were there?
Yes.
Remember, actually, we competed a little bit.
Yeah, and we lost.
You did. I vaguely remember that. But I think volunteering, I think is a, is a key aspect of building community and building trust and building communication, and I, as superintendent, would love to be able to offer more time to volunteering. I do it now as a high school principal and someone who's generally interested in volunteer work. I have, you know, participated in every single turkey trot except this past year where I was out of town, unfortunately. But, you know, I, I think, I think there's great opportunities for the role of a superintendent, and really any administrator and teacher for that matter, for people to see you outside of the role. I really think that's important. You know, whenever I'm, you know, at Roach Brothers or at the coop next door, it's funny to see the students and some of the families, you know, do a double take. You know, what are you doing here? You know, you're my principal. And we have a great conversation, and it's really about that human connection that I think you can have when, you know, you're talking with people about life and what's on their mind and maybe what they're worried about that isn't connected to, you know, the day-to-day operations of school, which can be very stressful as well, as we know, very enjoyable as well, as we know. But I think that's very important, volunteering and, you know, being present at restaurants and things like that, that where we know our, our families will be.
Third question. The value of our district is to hold growth mindset and that great learning can come from mistakes. Please share an example of time when you experienced a mistake or a failure and what you learned from that experience.
I happen to wholeheartedly agree that the great part of learning oftentimes is the result of things that didn't work out, as long as you're reflective about it. And I think that's a key part of, of, you know, growth and the growth mindset is to reflect, whether it be on yourself or within the team. So an example that I think I can come up with pretty easily is probably about 10 or 12 years ago, we wanted to have our department heads at the middle school and high school serve in a little bit more of a evaluative capacity. We knew that the older model of, you know, pre-2000s, the department heads were quasi-evaluators. They, they would go in and observe and they would write, you know, an evaluation in the old, old system. And that to us, as we look back on it, wasn't too effective. So it was probably about 10 to 12 years ago, we wanted to present an opportunity for more leadership from our department heads by having them be participating in a coaching model. So we did some professional development around specific educational, professional coaching. We did some training, and we were able to successfully negotiate with the union the expanded role of department heads as coaches. We were inspiring in our presentation. We were clear in our expectations. We were supportive in refining their practice and their work, but it didn't work out. I think the coaching model at that time was perhaps maybe a little bit too advanced relative to, I think, what we're asking them to do at that time. They were still carrying a pretty significant teaching load, and to go in and coach and coach well takes a lot of time. And I think we underestimated the time that was to be available for them to properly coach. So this wasn't the responsibility of the department heads in the sense of they didn't want to do it. It's that they couldn't do it. And we reflected on that. Took us a little bit of time, but we now have a much improved model around our department heads and team leaders that I think you're familiar with being effective supervisors. And low and behold, much of what they're doing is based on some of the coaching requisites that the previous model, you know, said was effective. We also provided them with more time to do it, so one less teaching period. And that began this year. I was happy to be part of that process from the mistake 10 years ago to the success this year.
Okay, let's see. What are the key factors in schools and districts that enable students with special needs to find success? And what have you done to support and include families of students with special needs and their child's educational experiences?
It's a great question, too. I think first and foremost, you need a very clear belief and attitude around the core value of inclusivity. That's first and foremost. And then secondly, building off of that belief and attitude, have a strong commitment that's clearly articulated to every teacher, not just our special education teachers, not just our specialists, but every teacher, every administrator in the district needs to understand and have as part of their daily conversation what it means to teach every student. And then I think it's important to provide the necessary training, professional development for those teachers that will have students included in their classrooms that do have cognitive or behavior, you know, challenges, and, and again, support them the best you can. I then also think you need to look at data, analyze that data, take feedback from families, especially ones at the younger ages, teachers that work with those students, and I think at the upper grades, maybe the secondary seven to 12, you can ask the students for feedback. So you analyze that data, and then you also monitor, you know, progress monitoring and collect the data and look at the data, make refinements. And then again, much like we said a few minutes ago, you reflect on what's working and what isn't. And, and again, you make, you make the necessary adjustments to provide that support to those students. And, again, you make the necessary adjustments to provide that support to those students. Relative to families, well, just, it seems, seems we're constantly working with families to support them, to make sure that they understand very clearly what it is that we're doing around the goals for those students, to ask those families, again, what are you seeing at home? What would you like to see in school? And develop really that strong partnership with those families. Just last week, this is a good story, and just last week I met with a mom and her dad. And the dad's a longtime Westboro resident, came in in support of his daughter, his grandson as well. And, you know, we had some really thoughtful, in-depth conversations about what it is going to take to support, you know, the grandson and the son and our student. And I got a great note from that mom and the grandfather the next day, thanking us for easing their concern and taking away some of their worry. And, again, that's the, that's the type of communication we do at the high school. I've seen that at Mill Pond in my visit just, you know, on Monday. And I know the other schools do it, too. And if not, then, again, we'll measure that core value and that commitment against action. And I think that's the best way for students to see and feel and understand what their potential is.
Okay. Question number five. What would be your approach for supporting the six building principles that you are responsible for supervising and evaluating? Describe your daily, weekly, and monthly tasks and systems you envision establishing to provide oversight, guidance, and feedback.
So, I have had the great fortune of working under a superintendent who is exceptional at this, exceptional. I know because she works with me as a high school principal. And I'm close with the colleagues in the other buildings. And as superintendent, for the most part, I would continue with the practice that Amber has established. They are twice, and Daniel is part of this process in this team as well. And I know Daniel, as the assistant, would be an extension of the superintendent. We are meeting with either Daniel or Amber four times a month, individually, in our buildings. And that's a great commitment to their leadership. But it extends as a, I'll speak as a principal now. What that does to reassure us that we've got their support has been tremendous. And when teachers and students see them in the buildings, that resonates, you know, quite a bit. And I would, I would keep that practice of being in the buildings as often as I can, getting around to see teachers, getting around to see students, but obviously supporting, you know, each and every principal and even the directors. You've extended it to directors that are K to 12 and have an interesting perspective on curriculum and instruction in their disciplines. But there would be daily communication, or as needed, sometimes multiple times a day. We've established a very good working relationship with central office at the building level. And, again, as I've said, several important reasons why that is good in the buildings themselves. But building principles are so effective, if it's done well, for student success. I mean, it helps bind, a highly effective building principle, the research is clear on this, helps students succeed because teachers feel valued, teachers feel supported, they can be at their best, and if they've got questions, superintendent's there, assistant superintendent's there to answer those questions, actively listen. I would do that. One thing that I would add to that highly successful practice that is currently in place, one thing I would add, though, is actually two things now that I think about it. I would add more time in, more consistent time in buildings. For example, while two hours is highly effective, I might consider as superintendent, spending multiple days in the same building to get a feel for the flow of a week. I know there's other school districts that call it, you know, superintendent residency. And I hope that doesn't scare some teachers, or students for that matter. But I think that's very important, to see multiple days' worth of progress and to be there and support. I would also add, as superintendent, and I was talking with a staff member about this in relation to solving the sub-crisis, I would offer the opportunity for the superintendent and assistant superintendent to be a substitute in schools. I do it now as a principal, and I can't tell you how fun it is, how uplifting it is, how when you're there, kids ask you about the strangest things. When I was touring Armstrong the other day, it was 100 Day. And walked into several classrooms and one particularly was really dressed up. And the teacher, "Welcome our visitors." And one student, you know, had said, "Are you 100?" And I said, "Do I look 100?" And he looked up at me because he's so small and I'm 6'3". "Yeah, you kind of do. You're far away." So, you know, kids say the darnedest things, right? And, but I just think that there's opportunities, you know, to be there, not just in frequency, but in, I guess, in continuity. Hope that answered every part of that question.
In addition to leading the district in teaching and learning, there's also school safety and security to manage across six buildings in our district. What do you see as the biggest issues and priorities when it comes to safety for school buildings and events?
Okay. I've done specific training as a high school principal, as have some of our directors, especially around event safety. So, there's great, you know, there's great seminars and webinars and in-person workshops around safety. But I said this in the first round interview, and it's not changed. You know, Maslow states that in order for students and staff to be successful, they must be and feel physically, socially, and emotionally safe. That is the number one priority. And if there are any high school students or parents that drop off over by the tennis courts or get off the buses at the high school, they know that I'm out there every single day, even in the tough weather. But I think it's very, very important to meet and greet and welcome. That addresses the emotional and social safety. I think it's important to lock the doors, myself, with the help of our assistant principals, every single day. We don't radio somebody to do it for us. It's one of us, every single day. In addition, specifically, I think our facilities, and I know this is a current priority or a matter that you're dealing with relative to the roof at Hastings and the capital improvement projects, but our facilities need to be safe. They need to look safe. They need to obviously be structurally sound. And they need to feel safe. And I think that's, that's something that I think is a big issue. And, of course, that's attached to, you know, budgetary issues as well. And, you know, I think, lastly, I'd just like to add that the safety is shared. It's not just me locking the doors of the assistant principals. It is everybody believing and knowing what their responsibility is around school safety. You know, crisis management, crisis planning, we do drills, we work with the fire department, we work with the police department. It is, it may seem unseen in some regard, but we work on this constantly. And it is an absolutely big priority. Security cameras as well. I think there are a couple of schools that do not have security cameras.
There will be.
What's that?
There will be, very soon.
Okay. So, I think that that is a, that's an issue that I'm glad to hear that's being addressed.
Thank you. What would be your approach for attracting, developing, and retaining staff at key leadership levels? How do you approach hiring those who will work closely alongside you from the district?
Very good question. So, in terms of hiring and retaining high quality, to me, it's just not at the leadership levels. It's at the teacher level, too. But it is making sure that our environment is attractive, that it's safe, that it's culturally competent, that it is put students first, that it's driven by our core values. All of those cultural components that make a place great, and our schools are great, our district is great, can be better, as we never rest on just being great, right? We know excellence is not a state of being. It's a state of becoming. But we need teachers. We need district administrators, building-level administrators that know that our culture is strong and supportive and the climate is positive. So, that's constant nurturing every single day. I think being a member of different associations at the state level, MBNPDE, Massachusetts Partnership for Diversity in Education, I think that's been great about potentially hiring and attracting, you know, diverse candidates so that our students see their teachers that are just like them. Same thing with administrators. So, my approach would be extremely dedicated and very supportive of those building leaders. And as far as retaining staff, again, making sure that we are having whatever that staff needs, in addition to feeling, you know, welcome and belonging and seeing themselves, you know, that we have a, we have a culture where there's, you know, windows, mirrors, but also sliding doors. And I'm not sure if anyone's really heard that term recently, but I had read a great article a few months ago about sliding doors. And that is making sure that there's opportunities for people to tell their story and to share who they are and what they value and what they believe in. So, if there's employee resource groups that are available within the school district, I think that that would be something that could help retain our best and high-quality teachers.
What values do you uphold when starting and developing a budget? What experience do you have managing capital costs across multiple buildings in a school district? What actions would you take regarding the budget in the weeks and months leading up to the town meeting?
Okay. So, in terms of values, I would say, well, I think there's three truths. One, the budget is the school committee's. Two, it is driven by student needs. And three, that the superintendent and the district administration, especially working closely with the finance director, manage and, you know, present the budget to the school committee. In terms of values, I don't want to oversimplify this, but for the sake of, you know, time, I guess, efficiency and effectiveness are two values that should drive decisions around budget creation. And, again, I will add purpose-driven, but that falls in line with, you know, the student-driven, the budget-driven by students' needs. In terms of experience managing capital costs across multiple buildings, I don't have experience doing that. I can tell you what it looks like. It's a lot of work. It's taking input from our building leaders. It is sitting down with them and the finance director and seeing what it is that they need to support learning and to support high-level, quality teaching. I will say, though, I do have experience serving on three separate building committees. The one that renovated the high school when I first arrived here in 2000. Shortly after that, in response to the first lights discussion and debate and vote, I led, managed the private funding of a $431,000 turf field at the high school site. That was our first turf field. It was the third in the state at the time. I was the athletic director and I take great pride in that. I know that there's a town committee that works in partnership with all, you know, agencies and offices in the schools and the DPW, the police, the fire, and town hall, that works in collaboration to set some capital cost priorities, capital project priorities, I should say. And in terms of actions to take regarding the budget in the weeks and months leading up to town meeting, I would hit the road and go see civic group. I would go to the senior center. I would go to the Rotary. I would go to the women's club. I would attend, obviously, select board meetings and finance advisory committee meetings. I know that there's a liaison from the finance advisor. I'd meet with that person as needed, along with Anita, who I have a great professional working relationship with. I guess, for the lack of better word, if to sell the budget and justify it, and I know I could do that. I know I could do that. Yeah, that answers your question.
Thanks. How do you handle criticism of the district or of your own performance, particularly when it might be shared publicly during a school committee meeting or on social media?
Well, nothing hurts more than, you know, when people say things about you, especially when it's true. But I hope that, and I know it's a difficult time period, but I hope that people are objective with their truth. I really do. But in terms of handling it, you've got to make the calls. You've got to make the calls to inform school committee that maybe something is happening or if school committee has informed me that something has happened, we talk it through. And I think similar to, you know, a good approach that works in the classroom, you sit and talk, you actively listen, you try to sort out the facts, you obviously listen to opposing viewpoints. You try to find common ground where maybe there wasn't any. I think you, you know, share facts, again, objective truth. And, you know, you find compromise and you try to build consensus and understanding. But it can take a long time. But I think in terms of just open, honest, direct communication, you know, I'm a high school principal and, you know, there's plenty of criticism, criticism to go around. I want to answer people's questions, whether they're fears, worries, or concerns, or just misinformed. The best way to do that is to sit, talk it through, actively listen to one another. And, you know, and sometimes you just need to agree to disagree. But one thing should run through all of this, and that is mutual respect and civility that should guide those tough conversations, okay? While people bring opposing viewpoints from a very personal perspective, if there could be agreement between those opposing viewpoints to make it about the value or the norm that we're trying to get at and to be civil about it, then I think you can pretty much answer, you know, anything. then I think you can pretty much answer, you know, anything to some satisfaction. I really do. It's when it gets personal that it gets, you know, it gets a little touchy and a little difficult to come with resolution.
Thanks.
Okay, we're almost there. Two more questions. Question number 10. If you are the next superintendent of Westboro Public Schools, what would be your top three priorities during your first 60 days and why?
Okay, top priorities. I think number one would be very clear with the community about what my entry plan would be. And to give you a sense of that, I would make myself available and accessible to meet with anyone, whether it be individually or in small groups, you know, there's 4,000, you know, students and families, you know, plenty of teachers, but I would make myself available to, to listen. And, and I think it would be important in those conversations, you know, to essentially ask four questions. One, what are you, what are you proud of? What is going well? Number two, what is a challenge? Number three, where do you see opportunities for us to make progress? And I think the fourth question for me would be something along the lines of, you know, what are those traditions and what are those things that, you know, you hold dear and wanna preserve? And, and we listen, and we talk it through. And when we develop, you know, or I guess gather the responses to those questions, you begin to develop that shared vision that I was talking about at the very beginning. And again, it's every stakeholder. And so, I think that would be the first thing. And that would start, you know, whenever I started, maybe even sooner. Working in transition, possibly in May or June, or sooner than that. Because your decision is a fast, on the fast track, so it could be, could be soon. And I think a second priority would be getting into the schools, especially the pre-K to six. They're not used to, they would not be used to me. The seven to 12, you know, there's alignment, there's conversation, we have our SLT, seven to 12 administrator meetings. They have a better sense on, on me and my style. But I would want to get into the younger grades in those buildings and listen to the teachers, listen to the staff, listen to the students. And then, I think, you know, thirdly, I would wanna be an effective communicator, you know, with my own style. I would probably over-communicate and maybe some high school people watching, we were like, "Thank you." But, you know, I, I would, I would look to develop my communication style with, with our stakeholders as a third priority. And why? I sort of alluded to it earlier. Because we have a collective responsibility to take care of our kids. That's why I've stayed in this town. It's incredible to see how the town and the schools have symmetry around their, their top priority, which is their children. And, and I think that that is something to certainly be proud of, certainly something to maintain and celebrate, frankly. And I think when you can invest your time in the people who make up our district, the potential is limitless.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Finally, last one, then you can breathe. Do you have any questions for us? And please feel free to use this time to make your closing remarks as well.
Okay, thank you. Do I have questions? I do, I do.
He warned us he had questions.
I did, I did warn you. But, you know, like any good team, we would be a team. And, you know, maybe I'd be the coach and you'd be the general manager. I'm not sure. Maybe we would switch as needed. But as a team, I, I would love to know, what are the top values you think embody the Westboro Public Schools?
Guess I can answer from my point of view is excellence for every student. And that's been true for my term on the school committee, including the outcome for my kids who are in the system, who were, did very well, and they have succeeded in life. And I would hope that to be the same for every kid that's in the system, no matter what their limitations might be.
I would say for me, equal opportunity for every single student.
Thank you.
I would say inclusivity.
Thank you.
Yeah, inclusion for all students. And a sense of belonging for students, families, staff. So, everyone walks through any door of our building and feels like they have a purpose there and that they belong.
Thank you.
Obviously, I support all of these. I would also add academic excellence. I think a good mark of, of education is what skills you learned in the time you spend in the schools and how they help you achieve your goals in life. So.
Great, thank you. What are you hoping to see in the new superintendent after the first 60 days or certainly after the first year? What are some of the, what are some of your hopes and dreams around filling this position?
I'd say, you know, continuing the great work that we already have happening, but then also finding areas where we can improve. So, I think we have a good district, but we're not perfect. So, obviously, looking for someone who can come in and gently guide us in the right direction, bring in new ideas, like what's happening in education. Where are we going with technology, for example? Where are we going with like best practices for literacy and math instruction? And just stay on the forefront of that, I feel like our district has. So, you know, continuing those curriculum reviews and really like kinda staying on top of that. And someone who can model for us the culture and the values.
I think the second part of that and the goal that would achieve what Spence suggested is the idea that we have over 700 employees in the school system. And obviously, when you have a family that big, there's always problems every day. And the ability to work through those problems in a satisfactory manner so that in fact, maybe not everybody is happy, but they at least understand our perspective, your perspective as a potential superintendent, in why we do what we do. Because I think if we do that well, although not everybody gets all of what they want, but to the extent that we deal with each person fairly and that we listen to their interests and to the extent that we need to compromise to allow them to perform in the manner that we expect would be my goal, as well as the academic and, and performance goal for the kids.
Great. It's good to hear that.
So, my turn. So, probably you would agree that the district has been in great hands in the last 10 years. And you probably know a lot better than I do, that's, that's the fact. And I think I would like to see that continued. The two challenges I see coming up and for, for, for the country, but for education in particular, one is, is the, is the technology that is changing the way we access education, the way education plays a role in looking for the job, specifically. AI is one of those things, but it's not the only thing. And, you know, I think in the next 10 years, the education may look very different than it does today. And I think I would hope the next superintendent pays a lot of attention to this changing landscape. The other thing is, there is a lot of political tension in the world right now, in, all over the place. And, you know, there, you know, we have elections coming up, there's a lot of tensions. It can be a stressful time, so it calls for, for strong leadership to carry through, you know, a difficult time and instill confidence in the students in such times.
Thank you.
So, I would echo the comments that have been made here. What I would be looking for specifically, just to sort of paint a picture, is someone who can definitely navigate between being in front of a pre-K student, can go from there to within an hour to the 13th column on a $65 million budget, who can really navigate those two extremes. And someone who, like our, our current superintendent, who can do it, you know, really make it appear effortless. So, you know, I would want someone who really has his, her, their hands on, on the full scope of the district, from, you know, the youngest student to the most hidden number on a ledger on the budget. I mean, this is a totally demanding 360-degree job.
Yeah, sure is.
Yeah, as you know.
Yeah, sure is.
Yeah, I mean, I think that these guys have summed up everything that I can think of, so they've covered a lot of those things.
Thank you, thank you. If I got maybe 90 seconds to ask Dr. Mayer a question? He would be a part, you'd be a partner, Daniel, very close to the superintendent. What are, what are the characteristics you're looking for, for a partner and a team member?
I mean, given that my primary role is working with the teachers on curriculum and professional development, you know, somebody who's a champion for public schools and the importance of like high-quality curriculum and high standards for everyone, for our students and our staff. And also somebody who protects us in terms of, there are so many distractions that take us away from having the important discussions about curriculum and teaching and learning. And a superintendent who can make sure that we don't get distracted by some of the, you know, minutia that comes at us often from the state. But, you know, and encourage us as, us to work in teams and collaboratively and make sure that there's time for us to, to come together, to focus on the, you know, on the curriculum and grow for future generations. As Yucub was saying, think about what it is that we need to be aiming for in the next few years in terms of moving ourselves forward to meet the challenges of changes in our society.
Thank you. My final statement, I'm gonna refer to a little bit of a prepared statement, if that's okay with you. Because I'm passionate about this work. Done it my entire life, I feel I was born, you know, to do this work as a, as a teacher and now as an administrator. But as a purpose-driven, collaborative, courageous, and empathetic school leader, I bring over 30 years of combined classroom and administrative experience at the high school and district levels. I firmly believe that the foundation for students', student success stems from a rigorous, encouraging, supportive, and connected classroom environment where the learning, growth, and development of every student, every student, not only prioritized but cherished. It's my true belief that success comes from that classroom experience. I'm passionate about steering the Westboro Public Schools toward excellence while upholding the values that define us and our shared mission. While certainly there are some things I need to learn about this job, I do know who we are, where we need to go, and when to make the call. And most importantly though, why we do what we do. I'd be honored and privileged to work in your team on behalf of the students and the staff and the families of the Westboro Public Schools and the greater community. I wanna thank you for your time, I wanna wish the other candidates luck. I wanna say hi to my Period Four Financial Investing class, because they root for me. And I look forward to the next phase in this process. But thank you, thank you all for your time and thoughtfulness. I appreciate it dearly.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Yeah, yeah, thank you, thanks. I mean, I can, if you want, do you want to?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great. And, yeah. Yeah, 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 okay, yeah.
Kristen next?
Here.
Oh. That's fine. We're just taking a short break until our next candidate comes. Yeah, Kristen next.
Yeah, Cube, how you feeling?
Much better. I don't, I don't sound like it, but I feel much better. Okay, yeah, it's all clear. Is that like a fluke? No, just.
I'm done, I'm done. I'll copy the questions. So, yeah, this is yours to keep. So, we have.
Souvenir?
Yeah, souvenir. We have 11 questions, so probably about five minutes on each. But, um, we're flexible, so we can have an hour. Yeah. Yeah.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Let us know when you're ready to go.
Okay, I'm just gonna open my water in case I need it. But I'm really, I'm ready, I'm ready whenever you are. I've been thinking about this a lot, so I'm ready whenever I need it.
I was gonna say, you survived the traffic at the Rotary and made it here, so congratulations.
I did. I've been here for an hour, I've been sitting outside.
Nice. Very good. So, we're just gonna go in order here and just ask you some questions and we'll take some notes.
Okay, great.
Yeah, we'll let Sarah kick it off.
Thank you so much for being here tonight.
Of course.
I'm gonna start with the first question. What areas of growth or opportunities for improvement have you identified within the Westboro Public Schools? What are some of, some ways your leadership will improve and lift the district to new heights?
Great. I will say first that, well, I did see some things as I was moving around that I plugged into while I was talking to different people. That's really where this is coming from, more than me being able to tell in, in one day or one visit of improvements that I would be hard and fast about. But some of the things that I listened to at Gibbons, they talked a little bit about professional development and thinking about ways professional development can connect and be really meaningful to what they're doing for the entire staff. They are working on UDL there, you know, and that's something I'm very familiar with, so that would be something that I could support. I would also think about, I heard in the elementary school, I asked about literacy, about the reading program, and the principal there shared with me that you work on a balanced literacy program. I also know, and I think you are using a bit of the units of study as well through Lucy Cawkins. And I know that right now, if you haven't seen it in the news or you haven't picked up the Boston Globe, lots of districts who do that are, you know, are being, are being. lots of districts who do that are, you know, are being, are being watched pretty carefully. So I would be able to help and think about what changes that you've made within that program. At Groton Dunstable, we have units of study, and we're working toward a real structured literacy program. And that program, there were certain things that we needed to start doing and stop doing. And I could talk through some of those things for sure. I think the main thing we want to make sure that we're stopping is what they call three-Qing, right? So when you're reading in early literacy, having a structured program that has phonics so that kids are actually really learning phonics and learning how to read. That's just an example of one of the things we've made sure we've shifted, putting lots of decodable books into classrooms. So that would be another. And then I also, one other thing that I was, that I'm thinking about, give me one second, I'll pull it up. Oh, I looked at your accountability data a little bit, and I think that some of the places where lots of folks, Groton Dunstable included, and in Arlington when I was there too, were losing some points as thinking about how we're getting our multilingual learners proficient and really up to being able to take those state standardized tests proficiently. You know, MCAS is something that we all know is a measure, and we're responsible for making sure that kids can meet those standards. It's not the only way we measure for sure, but we want all of our students to feel successful there. So I would, you know, be able to look at some of those subgroups a little more closely. And then finally, I think I would highlight or talk about something that I spoke about in my screening interview is access to higher-level classes. That was another one of the accountability points, and, you know, we struggle with that too in my current district. So thinking about really looking at high-performing districts, oftentimes when you just look at that mean space, somebody asked me about MCAS actually at Gibbons. When you look at that mean result in a high-performing district, you run the risk of missing what your subgroups need. So I think I would be able to come in and take a look at that with the help of, of Daniel, who is probably knows those results inside out, and think about ways that we could address subgroups in that data.
Several of our, of our recent superintendents have been deeply involved in our community. What other key roles and responsibilities might a superintendent of schools take on in the town? Please share two examples and how those roles relate to student success.
Sure. I think that students love to see you out in their community. And so I'd probably lean first, especially being new to the district, I'd probably lean first into things that I know are most important to the community. I know your community has a big focus on community service. So I would be thinking about how am I connecting with the places within the district that are near and dear to your community's service heart? So for example, in Groton Dunstable, we have something called Fishes and Loaves. And Fishes and Loaves is where we donate to, do you have Fishes and Loaves here also? Or do you have a food pantry type?
We have a food pantry.
So that would be one of the places to be involved, I think as the superintendent is really important. Being a public figure too is, when are you having your, maybe your town day? Or the things that are out in your community, I think it's really important for the district to have representation there, even if it's by school or just a, Westboro District Public Schools be there, and that would be something I could, I could man. Places where I know that there's gonna be lots of people. And of course, with that comes, I will mention, with that comes, which I've had a lot of practice with, I, in Arlington, I was a teacher there, I was a principal there, and I lived there. So, you know, with that also comes being able to make sure that those fun events stay fun events, right? And they, and they have their place for the community to come out and enjoy themselves and for the school district to be represented positively.
Too busy thinking about that.
Hi.
The value of our district is to hold a growth mindset. And that great learning can come from mistakes. Please share an example of time when you experienced a mistake or a failure and what you learned from that experience.
Sure. Growth mindset is, I'll just make mention of that, I call this the magical yet, right? I mean, sometimes we, we know we're working on skills and while we may not reach the goal, we will reach the goal, so I always try to insert yet. Places I think where I've had the most, you know, reflection points would be places where I've gone too fast. I can name two specifically. I can talk about, at Hardy, took me a second there to remember which school that was. At Hardy, we implemented a program called Tools of the Mind. It's a kindergarten program. It's play-based for the first half of the school year. And then the second half of the school year is really leaning into the skills, the academic skills. But the premise behind the program is that students learn from play. They pick up those skills that they need in order to learn from play. And we piloted at my school. So my school was a piloting school. We had all the training, we had all the knowledge, we were doing it very successfully. And then, then the idea was to grow this across the district. There's seven elementary schools in Arlington. And I was the spokesperson for that work because I was the pilot school and the principal there. And one of the things that I wish I could go back on is remembering, and I was probably, I don't know, maybe my second year as a principal, is that not everybody else had that knowledge, right? So I maybe on the scale of knowledge from one to ten was at a seven, and everybody else was at a zero. And I think the misstep there was, we needed to communicate better out to families about what the program was gonna be about. We needed to have more follow-up. Our school had some amazing teachers who really adopted this program such that they were vlogging out to parents every day. They were sending videos of the classroom home so they could really demystify it and see what it looked, felt, and sounded like, so that parents, the community would be, would be familiar with it. We didn't do that in the other schools. So whenever you're doing a pilot on something and you're, you know, you're trying something out, you have to remember that there's gonna be a different learning curve for, for the other people you're trying to catch up. So that, that's one example. Another example that I can think about readily, actually two, I can talk about, at the high school in my district currently, we're working on access to those higher-level classes that I spoke about before. And one of the ways that, to do that is to look at our levels, right? So of course, we have honors, we have open honors, we have AP classes, and then we have some just general, general preparatory classes for college. And in, in the other subject areas, we have reduced, you know, increased the options so that students are learning with a wide variety of abilities in classrooms. But we had yet to do that in math. And so we had two levels of college preparatory, and our idea or our goal was to collapse those two college preparatory and put them into one level. And we're gonna do that in geometry, and we're gonna do that in calc, we're gonna do that in all the classes, and this is how we are rolling out this plan. But we're gonna start just with algebra. And so we started with algebra, and we're, we're trucking along, and we're hitting bumps and bruises, and we needed more professional development for sure, that was something that we should have done. We also needed more input from the teachers. We should have gotten more input from teachers, and we didn't do that as well as we could have. And we also should not have said, and we're doing this in every single class. We are now just doing it in algebra, and we're gonna think about how we do it well there first and then roll it out into other spaces. Otherwise, we can't expect that the results to be different there. So we'll take what we've learned from trying to do this in this first space, and we will move it on to the other, the other subject, the other areas of mathematics. And then I can give you one more, this was just recently, this was last week. So last, we are, we are really working hard to make sure our student support team, which is a part of our multi-tiered system of support, is systemized across the district. And we did an activity, actually, any of them are watching me right now, they're now gonna know what we're gonna do on Friday. We did an activity where we, I asked all of the job-alikes to write a letter to me about what student support team meant to their job, to their role. I went around, I reminded all the groups, that's what we're doing, that's the focus. And all of the letters, most of the letters that I got back were about what was wrong with our current SST process, right? So instead of having them talk a little bit about, this is why it's important, this is the who cares, so what of the work, they really rested on why it was, why they felt like it was broken. So I really should have given them time to talk a little bit about what their feelings about SST ahead of time and to develop that common understanding of what we were going for. Yeah.
Okay. What are the key factors in schools and districts that enable students with special needs to find success? And what have you done to support and include families of students with special needs and their child's educational experiences?
Okay, great, I'm just gonna write two things down so I don't forget them. Okay. The first thing that I will talk about, and I'll get around to the special ed specific or the nuances and the details on the special education piece, but I want to address that multi-tiered system of support that I talked about a second ago. I said something in the question and answer over at Gibbons, and the special education coordinator there said, oh, I'm gonna borrow that line. You cannot tier one, two, or three, or you cannot specialize your way out of a tier one, two, and three problem. In other words, if you're trying to treat specialized instruction like something we should have already been doing in the classroom, it's not gonna help your learners who need specialized instruction. So one of the things I'm working on right now in, in Groton Dunstable is the strategic plan is around a multi-tiered system of support. We think you need to start with a really strong, multi-tiered system of support. What are we doing in classrooms for everybody? What are we doing for students who might need a little bit more than that? And what are we doing for students who need a little bit more than that and in smaller spaces more frequently? If we're not doing that well in the first space, it's really hard for special educators to then go in and be specialized about the work that they're doing with their students. So that would be the first thing. The second thing is, I think, never underestimate the power of a really good IEP goal. IEP goals are, are something that need to be specific, they need to be progress monitored, they need to be something you revisit. I think that working with team chairs and working with classroom educators and working with special educators around what that goal is, what it means, not assuming that general education teachers know exactly what they need to do in the classroom when students aren't in their pull-out spaces, that there needs to be a collaboration there. There needs to be consults. My most success for special education, for working with the special, with special education, first came from my work at Hardy. As a principal, I made it my business to be at every IEP meeting, every one of them. It really helped parents to know that I cared about what was happening for their student in the specialized space. I also had something called a social-emotional wellness team in, in all of my buildings when I was a principal, and that was an opportunity for the general ed staff, nurse, counselors, special education liaison, or our team chair, to come together and talk about students and what those students needed in classrooms outside of the SST process, the general ed SST process. So that is really important. And finally, I've been blessed to work with quite a few great directors of student services. Alison Elmer in Arlington and Jill Green, I'll shout both of them out, in Groton Dunstable. And one of the things that Jill said to me when I first started in Groton Dunstable, she said, I just, I really want, I really want a partner that's gonna help me connect the dots for people. We cannot be siloed from general education. How are we gonna do that? I said, well, you and I are gonna start signing everything together. You know, I'm the general ed representation, you're the special ed representation, and people are gonna see that we work together. There, there needs to be partnership between those two spaces, it can't be siloed. And I think then finally, what I would say is, every district usually has a CPAC or a special education parent, parent advisory council. And I've often gone to those meetings. Lots of questions most recently have been about reading and dyslexia. And what are we doing in our district to make sure that we are using progress monitoring that helps to catch that, catch those common symptoms of dyslexia? So that would be another thing that I would say, you know, know your CPAC, know your folks that really are out and advocating and what they're bringing in forums on and what, what they might wanna learn a little bit more about. What are those offerings gonna be? Keep staring right at you, but you're like right, you're right in my line.
Brian did the same thing.
Thank you, Steve.
You guys are all writing, and I'm just like...
Well, good for you. Okay, question number five. What would be your approach for supporting the six building principals that you are responsible for supervising and evaluating? Describe your daily, weekly, and monthly tasks and systems you envision establishing to provide oversight, guidance, and feedback.
Okay, great. I do that now. So really, I, I talked, I've talked about this throughout my time or my interviews and questions. You know, part of the reason that I wanted to go to a, a little bit of a smaller district as, as an assistant superintendent was because I knew that my ultimate goal was to be a superintendent. And as a result of being in a, Groton Dunstable's twenty-four-hundred students, regional. And why I tell you that is because we do a lot of jobs inside our, our title and outside of our title. So I've really gotten an opportunity to partner with the superintendent there around supervision and evaluation of principals. So the first thing that I would say is that we meet a lot. So I call principals chief energy officers. I call them that because the energy it takes to run a building and sustain really good education happening in classrooms while also making sure the building is safe and sound, you know, it's a lot. It's, it's a big job. And so that's why I call them chief energy officers. So we meet, we meet as, we have our CEO meetings, and we do that twice a month. We talk about problems of practice there, there's, it's time for, not just for me to talk about maybe kinds of the checkoff list that we need to do in the district, but also what are you experiencing in your buildings that you might need to talk out or really think about with, with your other principal colleagues. So that's one thing I do. The other is, and I think this is really important when you move into central office, the connection that you have with buildings. When you're a principal, you're expected to be there right at eight o'clock or right at start time, and if you're not there, people notice. The assistant superintendent, you know, eight o'clock would come, and I'd be sitting there and be waiting for people to check in with me, and life was ticking on around you because that's not where the action is happening, right? So I changed my schedule, and Daniel will, will say, he probably is tries, tries to do this too, and he will say he does it as much as he can, and I do, is I start my day in, in a building twice a week. I make sure that I do that, whether I'm just there for arrival and dismissal. I can see things in those time periods that I can check in with principals about. The other thing that I do individually during those visits is I walk in, we do classroom, we do walkarounds, but we talk about, you know, if I'm, if we go into a classroom, we've gotten into the common practice of saying, as a matter of fact, I don't even have to ask anymore principals, we'll come out and just say, okay, here are the three things I'm gonna reinforce, here's one thing I'm gonna remind, and here's one thing I might redirect. Or I didn't see anything to redirect, I'm like, okay, so now we're, we're starting to think about how you supervise and evaluate teachers. I always make sure when I am evaluating principals to, to do so in different settings, right? So I don't wanna just think about what's happening in classrooms. I also wanna think about what's happening at lunch, what's happening at recess. Am I gonna sit in on a meeting, on a, an IEP meeting where a principal is in there? Am I going to watch a faculty meeting? Am I going to look at communication out to the public, to the community? And really look over that communication and, and see how that's being written or done? Those are all important things that as a principal, I know I wanted eyes on. So developing that trust and having that relationship with principals individually is really important. The other thing that I think is crucial is that all the principals in your building, and I think you just named, you said six, so I will equate this back to when I was a team member of seven. It felt really good to have a common goal. So we all have the things that we're working on in our buildings, for sure, but what is that common goal that we're all working toward? And for us, that was, at the time, was social-emotional learning, response classroom. How are we making sure in our elementary schools, I even did this in the, in the middle school piece too when, when I built Gibbs, what, how, what are we working on together? Because that really helps to have that conversation point when you come together and you meet as a group. Meaningful conversations happen that way, and you can kind of, oh, that happened to me, here's what we do. So I think about them individually, I think about them as a group, and then I also think about the appro- about the approach that I need to give feedback. That would be how I will end. I will say that everybody takes feedback differently. You know, some people really like to know what I want, what I'm gonna say before I come to a meeting, so I do that. Some people don't wanna know that, they just wanna sit and have the conversation. Some people wanna have it in their offices, some in mine. Some, I think that's a really important thing, to know the person that you're giving feedback to. Feedback needs to land well in order for it to be applied. I think that answers the question. Okay. I'm ready. Please slow me down if I'm talking too fast. That happens when I get excited about what I'm talking about.
In addition to leading the district in teaching and learning, there's also school safety and security to manage across six buildings in our district. What do you see as the biggest issues and priorities when it comes to safety for school, buildings, and events?
Sure. Again, I'm gonna write a couple things down. Okay. The first thing that I would say is that you need to be planful. So you need to be proactive and think about, you know, we don't wanna think about our buildings in crisis ever, but it would be remiss if we didn't think about what would happen if we were in crisis. And so I think that having a relationship with the school resource officers, I was fortunate enough to meet your, I'm not sure if it was the chief of police, but a member of the police department, and also the fire chief during my time here on Monday. I think I just about met everybody in Westboro, it felt like.
Just about.
And so having that relationship with those folks is really important. I'm thinking of the time when, when I built Gibbs. Gibbs was a brand-new building for everybody. So nobody knew the nooks and the crannies and the navigating and, and what we might need to know if we needed to either lock down a building or shelter in place, or where were the kids going when they, when they needed to evacuate the building, what site that was at, because it hadn't been done before. So we did a lot of practicing of that over the summer. We were really transparent with parents about what would happen if we were to find ourselves and the need to either lock down, shelter in place. I've lived through the iterations of Alice. You know, what, what is the best thing to do now? I've gone from don't say anything to give as much information over the PA as you can. So I've done a lot of practicing with that personally, so I know what I'm asking principals to do when I want them to go over the, over the PA and practice that. So I think that's important, be really planful. I also think it's important for SROs not to just show up when there's an emergency, building relationships with students and with kids so that they, they're normalized if there's a, gonna be a people, community helpers in the building that are gonna help. I also think it's important to have the procedures and protocols, how are we badging in, how are we keeping track of who's in our building? You know, what cameras do we have set up so that we can see what's going on outside of the building? How are we making sure students know how to, how to report something? For example, if they don't feel safe, you know, you talk about, we talk about safety here in the, in the facility space, but there's also safety when you think about social emotional wellness. You know, how am I gonna report an incident of bullying? Or, you know, we've hung QR codes in all of our buildings. There's a QR code there, and you can scan that QR code if you have your phone out, which you're not supposed to have out, but you can have it out and scan the QR code and really have that easy access to report. I think that's another important thing. I'm gonna take one more look at the question so I can make sure I... Again, events, I think you need to be really planful. Oh, the other thing that I'll talk about that doesn't often maybe come up is allergies, huge, right? So knowing in your building when you're gonna run an event, if you've got students coming to the event and you're gonna be serving food, you better, you, we better make sure we know what, what could happen to students. The research that I've done there is oftentimes the first reaction to, to a food or to an allergies at school. So there might even be kids that don't, that we don't know are gonna have a reaction. And then what is my other last rule of thumb when I'm running a building? If I have somebody on crutches or in a wheelchair that the fire department doesn't previously know about, call the fire department and tell them. Because if you have a fire or if you have a drill, you wanna be able to get that student out. So there's just kind of running the gamut of safety there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What will be your approach for attracting, developing, and retaining staff at key leadership levels? How do you approach hiring those who will work closely alongside you to run the district?
Okay, great. So would you, do you want staff particularly at the leadership level or staff in general?
Well, why don't we make it in general?
Okay. Great. I'll do both. In general, generally speaking, hiring practices that I think are really important is first you're, you should be looking for a representative of the students that you have in your schools. And that's not always as easy as we would, it's not as easy as just me saying that, right? So how are you publicizing what you do in Westboro? I know that as I walked around this, this district on Monday, there were so many wonderful things going on here. So are you being clear and transparent about what happens in the district? Not just during hiring season, but off-hiring season as well? I know one of the first places you might go to when you're looking for a job is your website. So how is your website going to reflect what you're all about? And is it easy to find those things when you're hiring and recruiting? The nice thing about Westboro is you have your own, you have your own application page. Not a lot of school districts do that, so being able to go in, you could really utilize that page. The other thing that's great, great about Westboro that I would wanna continue to see happening is you're a mem, you're a member of the Massachusetts Partnership for Hiring Around Diversity. So you already have some, some leads there to be thinking about diversity itself. I also think, and I'll go back to the principals a little bit, when you're thinking about hiring season, and that's what I call it, you have to work with principals on setting up, what does an interview look like that is really gonna help you attract matches to your district? People who feel really welcome and feel successful in your district are going to stay. And that has everything to do with how you hire them. So one of the exercises we did in our SLT space last year was we talked about, what are we looking for? What do we want, what kind of teachers do we wanna have in our classrooms? And so we talked about these look fours that we use in our district when we're evaluating and supervising. We talked about our mission to create acceptance, belonging, community, a district multi-tiered system of support, all in equitable, all in service of equitable outcomes for students. So the trick was, the exercise was, write questions for an interview that are gonna help you know if the candidate values those things too. Include ways you're asking them to write scenario, or, or talk about scenarios where they're describing what that you might see in a classroom or in a special education environment, or in an OT space, whatever the position is for, that would assure you or give you some assurance that this was a real match for the district. To follow up on that, when I, I run the new teacher induction program, so I get firsthand experience with all of those new teachers that are coming in. So the program itself is important in order to think about retaining, but the exercise that we did was I actually put A, B, C, D equals E, that's how we refer to, so we don't say that every single time, up around the room. And the new teachers went around and filled the page, and I left it there. And then the principals came in for their meeting, and they're like, did we do that? I'm like, no, we didn't do that. They said, who did that? I said, your new hires did that. So think about how well you interviewed. Because this was an activity, I wish you could've watched it, I should've had you in here to see how quickly and easily they were able to do that at seven o'clock.
Yeah. Talk me to.
That happened in my screening interview too, it was how I knew it was 12 and I needed to wrap it up. So that, that's one way that I would think about doing that. The leaders, it's the same for me, really. I just recently hired two, two coordinators to help us think about multi-tiered system of support. I talked about the strategic plan being around multi-tiered systems of support. That is not a one-person job, right? So when I went to hire those people that were gonna help me lead in the district, I knew I wanted a classroom teacher who knew how to really teach well and who had made that shift in their practice through an equity lens, through all of the things we were looking for in Groton Dunstable. I knew I needed that for my tier one person. And I also knew that I needed, for my tier two, three person, I knew that I really needed somebody who was gonna understand what actually tier two and three interventions looked like. So I structured my interviews that way. I am very pleased with the results. Those individuals have jumped right in. You know you've hired the right person when you can stop talking because someone else is saying what, what's in your head. So that's what I look for when I'm thinking about leadership. For me personally, as a leader, I want a partner that's gonna be collaborative, that is gonna roll up their sleeves and jump in, that is gonna understand that we're not gonna rush in with a solution, that we're gonna be really, we're gonna be listening before we decide how we collaborate, make decisions, and then lead based on those decisions. Someone to help me be really explicit about our common understandings. So that would, what I would need personally.
What values do you uphold when starting and developing a budget? What experience do you have managing capital costs across multiple buildings in a school district? What actions would you take regarding the budget in weeks and months leading up to town meeting?
Okay. I'm circling key words. I'm close reading your question.
Always wise, particularly when you're taking a test.
It sure, yeah, it sure is. But I don't, I, I really enjoy it, I don't feel like it's a test. Values that I uphold when starting and developing a budget. My most successful budgets have been when I understand what's important in the district. So as a principal, as I mentioned before, I was one of seven. You probably can tell this by, by now, I'm not super shy, so I was always the one that I was voted to present to school committee on behalf of all of the elementary principals. And our, our, our defined autonomy was usually given to us ahead of time. So in this particular time I was principal, class size was really important, instructional coaching was really important, and thinking about how we were going to make sure that we could maintain a schedule that was long enough in the day and, and compensate through our, through payroll. So when we got together as, as a group, we had to look across all seven elementary schools. That wasn't a goal for just one of them, it was for all of them. So when which, which spaces had the largest class sizes? Which spaces needed more instructional coaching? And, and which spaces did we have to think about working on scheduling? So that's one way that I approach a budget. What are we valuing? The second thing that I would say is, in my assistant superintendent experience, when I am budgeting, so I'm in charge of all the entitlement grants, all of the competitive grants, software, curriculum, professional development, it's a pretty big budget. And when I'm thinking about what I'm gonna spend money on there, again, I align with, what professional development are we looking for right now? Really thinking about regulation, student regulation, pre-K to 12. So what am I making sure that I use my money on, prioritize my money on in my professional development budget so that we can meet that goal? At the district level, we have been talking quite a bit, and we did not wait to the weeks leading up until budget season to present at town meeting. We knew we were gonna be facing some fiscal challenges, I'll call them. We also know we were gonna be asking for overrides. We couldn't wait till then. And so how I, how, how, how I prepared, or how I prepared with my team was we formed two tri-boards, a regional district, two towns to think about and to understand and know what's important to them. And so we formed tri-boards. The tri-boards were made up of the school, which was me and the superintendent and our director of finance, the town select board, FinCom, town manager piece, and the community. So what we did was we talked about what's important to you, what's important to us, how are you gonna meet your numbers? What do we need to do to our numbers to make sure you meet your numbers? How are we gonna present with a united front? We started having joint school committee meetings because people were showing up to ask questions and didn't know, understand which questions, which place was gonna be able to answer. So we needed to make sure we had all of those resources there. A budget is not something you do alone. I may, as the superintendent, have an idea of where the money needs to come out of, or how much we might need to cut, or what we might need to, the number we're looking to meet or make, but I'm not in those buildings every single day, and I don't know exactly where it might be best to make those cuts. If I do that on my own, I might cut something that I, I could've been done more strategically. So I involve lots of other people. Capital.
Can I ask for clarification?
You sure can.
Since I'm sure that the word override probably struck a, a nerve with people who are listening.
Oh, sure.
Can you explain why there, you had a need for an override?
I sure can. So the need for the override was during COVID, when we had our COVID monies and our, and our grants that were being given to the district. We were able to do some great work with that, but when that money ended up drying up, you know, there were some things that moved over into the operating budget. That was the first thing. The second thing is the town, both the town and the school district. In a school that is regional, it's, it's own fiscal entity, and we have something called excess and deficiency, which is one-time funds. That is, it's not something that you hoping to need to use to balance your budget. Free cash, same thing. And I think what had happened in the town is that we were trying to get those budgets balanced, and those were leaned on a little bit too heavily. In addition to that, our circuit breaker money changed quite a bit, our chapter 70 money changed, our Student Opportunity Act, which, the formula that's used to figure out our Student Opportunity Act money, we do not get a lot of Student Opportunity Act money, but we're still really performing at a high level. So all of those things sort of came to a head at the same time. And, and that's what caused the districts to, the district to really think about, not just because of the school side, but things were happening on the town side as well. So the town was looking, the school wasn't the cause for the override. It is, it is, everybody is owning a piece of and trying to recover from both the pandemic and just some of the, some of the lack of funding that we're now getting. In addition to that, part of the other thing that we're doing to try to avoid that happening again is quite a bit of lobbying with the state and bringing up to the state that it's important that we look at the way these formulas are figured out for towns that are, you know, appearing to, to, to have enough and do very well. Because we're not getting enough money from most spaces, and so we've advocated in that way. The other thing that I will talk a little bit about is Groton is one kind of, you know, has one kind of revenue that comes in. Dunstable has a different kind of revenue. More students are moving into the town, there's more needs perhaps, and so they're also in the towns looking, looking at different ways to bring in and make revenue. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it did. And the other point is you mentioned joint meetings, could you define what they were? I mean, how, what was the, who were the people in the joint meetings?
Sure. So at our joint meetings, we had the town manager, we had the, always a member of the town select board, we had a member of FinCom was there, so that was the, the town side there. The superintendent of schools, myself, our finance person was there. And what we, the exercises that we went through, which were really great, we did something on the school side called Groton Dunstable by the Numbers. So we dug into all of the spaces where we could see for, over the last five years. So how, how are we making sure we plan fiscally responsible as we move forward to this budget, this tough budget year? And then Groton did the same thing, and Dunstable did the same thing, so that we could see all the pieces of the puzzle that were coming together over those last five years. Groton and, both Groton and Dunstable outlined where they might have to make cuts, we outlined where we might have to make, make cuts, we talked about our non-negotiables. So these were, it was all happening in the same space. And because of that, we were able to, I think, expedite a process that if we had waited and didn't all sit together and do that work, we might not have been able to come as successfully to the final proposal of the budget that we made. And that took a lot of, I mean, a lot of hours, there was a lot of hard work that went into that, but I think why it was successful is because that's not the first time everybody had come, come to the table. We had relationships with all of those people beforehand, talking with the town municipalities and really knowing and understanding what the values of the communities were is really important. Yeah. I didn't talk about capital, did you want me to do that? Capital planning?
Yeah, briefly.
Okay. Okay. In our building right, in our district right now, we have a brand-new building. So our brand-new building is going up, actually just toured it yesterday, so it's coming right along. It's going to look just like.
Fails.
Yes, because it'll look just like Fails, beautiful building. And, but our other buildings have, have needs, for sure. Right, the most need that we, we think about, we're thinking about what we do for, to make sure we have the ability to plow. Right, so when you're in a regional school district, we own that. So we have to update and maintain the equipment there and want to make sure we can get kids in school. So that's, that's a priority. Another priority is to make sure that we handle things that could potentially close our schools, right? So we had a leak in one of the spaces in the, in the library in the high school, and that was a priority. So I think, thinking about all of the projects that you know you have to do and targeting the ones that you know that are going to keep kids safe and in school are the ones that we, we've chose to, to really go, go after. And also, also having a five-year capital plan, right? So not just having, knowing what you need to do and being able to spread that out, prioritizing in tiers what you're going to handle first, what you need to handle second. And being really careful to ask the people who live every day in the buildings about what's not working there. Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Sorry, I know that answer took a long time.
Oh, no, budgets fascinating.
Yes.
Love it, we live it.
Yeah, we live it.
Kristen, how do you handle criticism of the district or of your own performance, particularly when it is shared publicly during a school committee meeting or on social media?
My first word will be carefully. My second is... Oh, during a school committee meeting. Okay, that's a, that's a key word there. So I'm going to ask a clarifying question. In your school committee meetings, it would be in my understanding or my assumption that I am not speaking unless I've had permission from the chair. That would be the first thing. And the second thing is if this is coming to me during public comment, it's not a back and forth.
Right.
So I think when I am listening to somebody who is giving criticism, typically they're angry, they're upset about something. You know, "You seem really upset." That, that phrase, "You seem really upset," has been very successful for me. And I want to have this conversation with you about what it is you're upset about. This might not be the time, it might not be the time to have that at the school committee forum, but I, I want to have it. So here's how you can reach me, here's how we can talk about it. It would hopefully be not my first encounter with the person. You know, I really do believe in building relationships up the best that I can, so when difficult conversations happen, they're not the first conversations I've had with folks. So that would be the first thing. The next is that I think about criticism especially that shows up on social media. And I'm going to almost go as far as to say 10 times out of 10, it's because of misinformation. And I, I feel like there's an op, there's an obligation to clarify when errors or mistakes are being made. I think that it's important to be transparent when you're doing things. So we try to avoid that, right, what the misinformation might be. And you really lean back on the fact that behavior has a reason. People show up in spaces for a reason. I think as a leader, it's my job to figure out what that reason is. And how do I move back toward the space of productive dialogue? Yes?
Yep.
Okay.
I turned already, okay. If you are the next superintendent of Westboro Public Schools, what will be your top three priorities during your first 60 days and why?
I only get six, the first 60, okay. I can do that. So the first 60 days, I think, I'll talk to you about them in themes. The first thing that would be really important to do would be to lean in and listen. So it would be that lean in and listen section of the work. And I would need to lean in and listen in a lot of different stakeholder groups. You actually represented them quite nicely in the, in the visit day. So how am I understanding the relationships with the municipalities? How am I understanding how things tick or work in a building? How am I understanding what principals might, might need? What does Daniel feel like he wants me to know about the district? You know, I would lean on him quite a bit. There's a lot of people actually on your staff that have been here for a long time, which says a lot about your district. So I would really want to hear from them. What do you feel like is working really well? Please tell me not, what to not touch. I do not want to touch whatever that thing is. You know, so that would be my data gathering phase, I think, and meeting with stakeholders. Then I would want time to reflect on what I would do with that. So now I'm culling the information, I'm looking at the data, both numerical and narratives. I'm making some guesses and wonderings and notices. And then the third phase of that would be to go back and look for feedback. So I would want to go back to those sta, same stakeholders group, groups and say, "Could you humor me? And I'm going to say to you now what I think I've found here, and I'm going to pick some common themes that I think we can thread through all of our stakeholder groups to really lean on and work on." And, and I am giving you permission to push back on me if I've missed something. So I think those would be the three phases. The other thing I would be remiss to say is within those first 60 days is to take a look at all of the things you've got going on in your strategic plan. Because you're, if I'm not mistaken, two years left or so. I think 2026 might be when you're ready to up, 2026, 2027, something around that. So I would want to know where you are there and how I'm going to help continue those moving. In one of your recent school committee meetings, I was listening to the update on that mid-year strategic plan update. And some of those themes that were mentioned by your current superintendent were universal design for learning, that was one thing that was talked about. The other highlight was co-teaching, special education. And then the other highlight was the work that you're doing in an academic support center in high school. Right, so those were three things that I, that really stuck in my mind. And one of the things that I would want to make sure to do that she talked about was, and to continue to pick up with is, is that professional development for your current staff is, is important, but you need to make sure that you're really doing that for the new folks too. Otherwise, your initiatives are going to fizzle. So that would be somewhere in those first 60 days to be really mindful about some of those things I already have seen that are important to you and figure out how I'm going to make sure those don't suffer a lapse because of new leadership.
Excellent. Thank you so much for coming tonight.
Of course.
Can, I wanted to close with asking you if you have any questions for us and if you want to make any final remarks, closing remarks.
Yes, I would love to do that. And I prepared them, so I'm taking my glasses off, which means I can't see you anymore. But I'll be able to see, see from my notes. I don't have any questions per se. I think that everybody has been very gracious about their time in Westboro. Anybody that I've leaned into and asked questions from the students when I walked into classrooms, to the municipalities, to Tammy or Human Research, everybody has been very, very available to answer questions. So I don't have too many questions. But what I did want to do is just sum up what the experience has been like for me and what I took away from, from Westboro and why I know this would be a place where I would be able to be successful and continue your successes. The first time I started to learn and read about Westboro was when I saw your posting. And I said, "This is a district I really want to look into." Lo and behold, I actually ended up knowing some folks in Westboro. Once I came out as a finalist, people started reaching out to me. And I said, "Wow, I didn't realize you had all moved out to Westboro." So I was able to talk to families, and that was an important part of my search. I've mentioned your strategic plan, that was really exciting and engaging to me, and I, I found out a lot of information there. You have a transparent budget plan, that was really important to me. You have entry points for different learners, I was able to see that right away. I watched some school committee meetings and, and found the things that you're working on and dealing with are very similar to ones that I have experienced with. So that was another reason why I, I was wanting to apply. And in every one of your documents, every one of the spaces where you talk about what you're doing for kids, there's a team listed there. It's not just one person that's identified. And that was really important to me as I looked for this position. So when I began to do my interviews, of course, I was looking for that to be validated. And in my screening interview, the meetings with stakeholders, the tours of Fails and Gibbons, my, my impressions became clear that they were true. I feel that way because I saw student agency at the middle school in PE and robotics and design electives. The Gibbons teachers talked about how important their collaborative time is to them. The educators voiced understanding that we need to be careful about different ways to define success. And I will add, especially in a high-performing district. At Fails, students were celebrating 100th Day, and I was really impressed with how that was integrated into the curriculum. It wasn't just with shirts and objects, but there was reading activities that embedded the 100th Day math problems that they really wanted to work on. The design of the school was clearly intentional to make sure that there were spaces for kids to learn differently. And I was amazed by how much thought went into that process. In talking with Latisha, your EL director, I was really impressed with how she's making sure SEI is embedded into classrooms and your multilingual learners have spaces to feel successful. Principals talked about their teams and how they work together to make things happen for kids. And every time there was a transition in the building, it was like I wasn't even there, which is exactly what I would hope to see. Attention turned to kids, dismissal, arrival. Municipality leaders talked about the relationship they've enjoyed with the district and the partnerships that they've had with the community. The borough, the chocolates were delicious. But I think finding a way to bridge over to right opportunities for the 18 to 22 population for your students is remarkable. Your academic support center at the high school, celebrating musicians. I know what a clarinet sounds like when you're just learning, and those kids sounded really, really, really great. So that was really fun for me to see. My favorite questions were things like, "How will we make sure that students feel like they belong?" That's my dissertation topic, I really liked that one. "What ways do you have to make sure you're presenting a fiscally responsible budget?" Which stayed true here tonight when you asked me about budgeting and, and paused enough for me to talk about my district. "How I involve the community." "How I've navigated the new health standards." I keep looking at you because we've had these conversations with one another. And maybe one of the most important questions from your tech department, Mac or PC? It's Mac. So I hope that I'm leaving you knowing that I'm approachable and I want to lead in teams that feel valued, that I think educator mental health is important. I'm collaborative, but I also know that the decision rests with me at times. And I have to make sure that even if I'm not going to make everybody happy, I'm not afraid to make those decisions in service of students. I work to have a sense of humor and have fun with my teams. We have a lot of hard days, but we should celebrate the good ones too, and that's important to me as a leader. Data is important, both numbers and narratives. I work hard. I know the days are long, long-lasting, but the tangibles of the hard work lasts even longer than that. Finally, it's clear to me that you know a superintendent moves between teacher, administrator, and public figure. And you understand and know that, that a leader needs to use their skills to arrive at the best possible outcome for the group that they're sitting in front of. So in closing, I thank you very much for your kindness throughout this process and the opportunity. You've got a really great district here. If selected, I would be honored to fill the superintendent position in Westboro. Thanks very much for your time and really giving me a wonderful last couple of days. I very much enjoyed my time here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a while. I'm going to take this just because my writing is on it, I don't want to confuse the notes.
Do that too.
Well, I think they hear me when I'm talking to them.
But not when you're like, "Someone did text me and say..."
Okay, they can't hear me, all right. Well, then I didn't say anything, no, that's all right. With that, thank you, Allison, for, for your attendance, I guess. And as you'll quickly see, we have more questions for you.
All right, good to see you.
Which is our habit, I guess. So with that, perhaps if you're ready, we're ready.
Great. Sounds wonderful. Thanks for having me.
Yeah, I'm going to start with Sarah.
Yep.
Thank you for being here today. I'm going to start with the first question. What areas for growth or opportunities for improvement have you identified within the Westboro Public Schools? What are some ways your leadership will improve and lift the district into new heights?
Great. So I, you know, I've been here one full day. So I've had a little bit of a limited opportunity so far. And I want to acknowledge that what I've seen overwhelmingly is a lot of strength. And I would say first and foremost, you know, I think one of the important jobs of the superintendent is to build upon that, you know, not only fixate on the things that are in need of improvement. You know, you have a highly, highly inclusive community, a huge commitment around kind of meeting the needs of all learners. I saw that firsthand and heard a lot about your programming from the preschool all the way up to your transition programming, which is very, very impressive. I think the students I met and my student ambassador, your school committee representative, talked about a place that is, a place where kids really feel like they have somebody to go to and a sense of belonging. And I think that's an incredibly important thing to nurture and sustain over time. The faculty talked about feeling that as well, feeling like people cared about them, both the administration and their colleagues. They seemed very cohesive, very thoughtful, very student-centered. You know, in terms of what I heard and what I heard directly from... from folks about areas where the community or, you know, the school district itself was looking for support, one is there is a kind of expanding population of students with language, English language learning needs. What can we do to sort of support the programming, make sure kids have what they need to learn the language skills? What do teachers need to sort of help support students in classrooms, whether that's through kind of professional learning or additional other types of support? What types of materials and supplies do we need? So that was one thing that kind of came up in conversation as I walked around. I think, you know, another question that came up had to do with sort of, it's more of a, it's kind of a structural question, but it was clear there was some concern about the high school schedule that got articulated. You know, the schedule has been the same for 20 years, and there was some sense among some folks that that schedule was no longer adequately meeting the needs of students. You know, schedule change is not easy. Everything you do has a trade-off, so that's a process that would need to be taken kind of thoughtfully and carefully with all constituents in mind, but with the sense that, you know, the schedule should really meet the needs of students first and foremost. So if it's not doing that currently, and there's evidence that there's not doing that, then we would need to like look at that. So those are two things in one day that I noticed. I'd have to do a little more casting about, I think, and spend more time here to really get a widespread sense of where the areas of growth are. You know, you've identified some of them yourself in terms of your own strategic planning, and I think that is work that I am right on board for. Some of the interesting things that you have in the works around sustainability and equity are things that really resonate with me, so I'm excited about that work. You know, I think at the end of the day, I'd like to spend time, get to know the community, hear from you, and it's really about prioritization. What matters the most, and where do we want to invest time and resources first? Thank you.
Several of our recent superintendents have been deeply involved in the community. What other key roles and responsibilities might a superintendent of schools take on in the town? Please share two examples and how those roles relate to student success.
That's a great question. I think, you know, I can think about sort of my own experiences as well. So I really believe the superintendent does sort of link the school district to the wider community, and as such, it's really important to find sort of connection points that make sense. You know, work that I've had the kind of honor to be part of in different, kind of different roles that I've played in Westwood. One is working in a human rights task force in town. Another is working, partnering with our director of the council on aging to support some grant work that brought together middle school students and senior citizens within the community. And I think those types of projects really strengthen the bonds between the school district and the school staff and the wider community. Ultimately, you want the community to kind of know and trust the superintendent of schools, and you can't know and trust someone you don't see and interact with in some way, shape, or form. And kind of on your own terms as well, not just, you know, me talking about school stuff all the time, which I love to do and will do, you know, all day long. But I think if you get to know people in different contexts. I've worked for folks who have also sat on the various boards in town, so the recreation department board, or worked with the local council on aging, or the food pantry. So I think all those kind of community partnership possibilities and connections are absolutely worth investing in. You know, I need to get to know Westboro, see where help is needed. You know, I don't want to sort of show up and volunteer for people who don't really need or want me around and would love to go someplace where they actually could use an extra pair of hands and are looking for that. And I look forward to that very much. There's a lot out there in the world that I'd like to do and I'm interested, so it's an easy sell for me.
Thank you. A value of our district is to hold growth mindset, and that great learning can come from mistakes. Please share an example of time when you experienced a mistake or a failure and what you learned from that experience.
So I think one of the things that I learned, and this one really stuck with me because it was something that was important to me, and I tried it and screwed it up. When I was in the principal role at the middle school, I felt very strongly about the introduction of an advisory program into our middle school environment. We had some data that suggested that kids, as they moved through the middle school, felt less connected as they went through, not more. And that was concerning to me. I think ideally, we want students to feel more and more attached now. You know, there's some developmental things that happen as kids move from sixth to seventh, eighth grade. That's definitely true. But it's not an excuse, and I wanted to sort of find ways and structures to help students feel like they had an adult to go to, like they had a community of peers who sort of saw them and understood them outside their academic performance. And, you know, when I became a principal, that was a part of why I wanted to do that work. My first attempt to do the work was a complete disaster, and in part because I was thinking of it as sort of a schedule problem. How do we fit time in? How do we sort of rearrange the schedule and sort of make this thing work? So I was treating it sort of as a technical task and not really understanding how much buy-in and support I needed from the wider community in order to get the thing off the ground. So, you know, I had a small committee, and we worked hard. We had all these great ideas that we thought were fantastic and attempted to sort of roll it out to the staff. And, you know, I got a very polite email from the union president, who also happened to be a middle school teacher, saying, "I don't think people are ready." And I had to stop, kind of regroup, and figure out another way to come out of the process. And what I ended up doing was taking, slowing down, taking more time, really being very deliberate about involving particularly the faculty who were going to have to lead these groups in the development of what it was going to look like, what its purpose was, what we were hoping for, kind of get them on board with the vision, and then ultimately even get them on board through allowing them a lot of input in terms of some of the conversation about structure. And then providing some resources and training so that they felt prepared. So this change that I wanted to kind of jam through as like a technical thing, kind of figuring of, it was obvious that this was the thing that was needed. I had to slow down and really sort of build a case for it and make sure people felt comfortable. I'm going to say right now, I still think it wasn't perfect that second time. If I were to do it again, there are other things I might do as well. But each time, you know, I learned new things, so.
What are the key factors in schools and districts that enable students with special needs to find success? And what have you done to support and include families of students with special needs and their child's educational experiences?
It's a fantastic question. I think there are a number of really critical pieces of this.
Actually, the little mic piece fell off.
Oh.
That's fine. Here, let me help you.
Okay.
Did you watch it go?
I did.
It's actually, it's not your fault.
No, my speaker.
I didn't chew on it or anything.
Thank you very much. So a couple, a couple of key components I can highlight here. I do think, you know, our students with special needs deserve, first of all, access to the least restrictive environment possible. They really, we want to make sure that kids are included with their peers as much as possible in their home environment and home schools. I really believe strongly in that philosophically. I think that every child wants to and needs to be part of something and part of something sort of familiar. I do also really believe that we need high-quality instruction for students that meets their needs, whatever those needs might be. And that's a match, and that means a built-out array of programming that sort of starts with programming that's in the classroom and in general education classrooms, supports and services within that environment, kind of all the way to specialized program where we have very, 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 very discreet skill building for kids that's not necessarily available in a genetic program. And I think that's critical as well. I think community and parent support is a really important piece of the puzzle. So a relationship and partnership with the parent organization, a good CPAC and school district relationship matters. It helps sort of build a network of parents that can support one another and also kind of communication pipeline between those parents and the school district so that everybody feels like if they have questions or concerns, those can be answered and addressed. I think a lot of kind of support for students really comes down to trust. You know, students sometimes have vulnerabilities, and the district needs to sort of understand and recognize that and be able to sort of wrap our arms around them and make sure we're giving them what they need to be successful and supported and appropriately challenged, not underestimating them ever, and to be safe. And I think those, those pieces, you know, inclusion, high-quality instruction, and wraparound kind of family and community support are really key.
All right. What would be your approach for supporting the six building principals that you are responsible for supervising and evaluating? Describe your daily, weekly, and monthly tasks and systems you envision establishing to provide oversight, guidance, and feedback.
I've very much benefited from being a principal in a district with really helpful leadership from both the assistant superintendent and the superintendent where I've worked. And I want to talk about kind of what that was like and sort of what I have done in my current role. I think, you know, the principal's job is an incredibly important one. They are the instructional leader of a school. They are the most responsible person for making sure teaching and learning is very high-quality in that school. And their job is to work with teachers, and the teacher's job is to work with students. So everything sort of trickles down from there. And if they aren't getting the support they need, then things can kind of come apart quickly. I think first and foremost, I've worked with principals around sort of calibrating on what do we mean when we talk about high-quality instruction? What does it look like in a class? Do we have common understandings? So I have run trainings with our principal group around, "Let's look at video together. Let's talk a little bit about what we see and observe." We've talked about that feedback process with teachers. How do you do that in a way that encourages growth? We really, in my current district, we have a system that is not a full-on adoption of the state system. It's sort of a modified version. And to be honest, it's a version that we, we took that approach because we really wanted it to be a system that prioritized growth over judgment. And I have a caveat for that at some point, but the notion is really that it's very hard to encourage growth if you set up a system where people feel like they have to come in front of you and perform, only talk about their strengths and never talk about what they're struggling with. Instead, we wanted a system that encouraged ongoing conversation about sort of the themes that needed improvement over time. So we really worked hard with our principals to sort of shift to that. You know, identify a few really high, high-leverage things that you can work on with a staff member. Keep coming back to those in conversation. Talk about what you expect to see and then get back in there and see it and give feedback. There is also real work I've done around what good feedback looks like. All too often, I think feedback comes in this sort of formula that's like where it's buried. We say something nice, and then we say the thing we really want to say, and then we say something nice at the end, that sort of positive sandwich. And in my experience, that does not work. It's not very effective. I think what we need to do is be direct and kind. Clear is kind. We need to be able to say, "This is this thing I saw, and you really need to work on it, and here's what's going to happen from here on out, so I'm going to help you." And in some cases, "Here's what's going to happen if it doesn't happen." So I think we've worked very hard to do that in the Westwood Public Schools, and I've been a big part of that. So helping principals sort of go through that process. You know, the thing about educators is we're all growth-oriented. We all want to give everybody every chance in the world. And so part of the process is also thinking about what to do when you can move people. How do you help kind of unstick something when it's really stuck? And that's where we get into sort of talking about either improvement plans or even in kind of worst-case scenario, moving people out of the organization. I think that's necessary. It doesn't happen often enough in schools, to be frank, and I think it's important to be able to take on when it needs to happen. Fortunately, you know, many, many people who end up as teachers really want to be there. They want to improve. They want to do the right thing. And so we have a lot of good talent to work with, but at times, there's going to be the necessity to sort of push. And part of my job as superintendent is to help people do that. I've worked in a system where we meet, or actually I meet, with each of the principals and department heads at about this time of year. They're coming up to kind of go through who are all our new staff, how are they doing, what do they need, what does their trajectory look like? Are we going to keep them coming back? Or is the growth happening too slowly so that we don't see them making it here in the long run? And I think that's an important key piece, too. We want to invest in folks where we think we've got a chance to develop them to the point where they can work for kids. A school system is a really great place. It's about learning, but it's not at school. It's not really our job to do all of the training part. We need people to come with enough skill and already sort of developed mindset that we have some good baseline to work with. So I think that's important, too. Is there anything else? I do think the principals have a lot of other things they have to contend with, right? So the core is really teaching and learning. How do you improve instruction? But there's also all these things that happen around sort of parent engagement, families and communities. What's going on socially with kids? How do you kind of keep up with, you know, whatever thing is happening out there? And so part of the job of a good superintendent is actually to be a sort of sounding board and support and help to principals when they are trying to navigate through these issues as they arise. I have to say, some of the things happening right now are really hard for our principals, and I want to make sure they feel supported, like they have people to go to who can help problem solve with them as issues arise. You know, social media and the universe of cell phones has done us no favors in schools. And, you know, I understand why they're there. I understand that they are important to families, and there are definitely times where I wish I could wave on and disappear the whole thing, you know.
Great. Thank, oh, can you hear me? Great, thank you. The next question is, "In addition to leading the district in teaching and learning, there is also school safety and security to manage across six buildings in our district. What do you see as the biggest issues and priorities when it comes to safety for school buildings and events?"
Honestly, I think the top thing we need to be thinking about at schools is, you know, the thing that it feels like is most under our control is how do we take care of our students and their mental health? And that investment pays off over the long term, right? We need school to be a place that is a good place for students, where they experience a sense of connection and belonging. And doing, by doing so, we kind of build relationships and rapport with students so that they associate us with a good time and a good point in their lives. Now, there's a whole lot of sort of technical things on the, on the sort of building and security front that I think we can certainly do and we always should do. Those things can be helpful in the event that there's something going on outside the school or something that's going to come into the school. I do think it's very important to partner with your municipal partners, police and fire especially, around what are the processes for school safety? Do we have incident management teams at each school site? Do we have a district-wide team? Do we engage regularly in sitting down with those teams to practice thinking through different scenarios? Do we have our communications set up so that if we need to get word out quickly, we will do that? Do we understand who's in charge in what situation and what their role is? Do our students have enough of a sense of what to do in an emergency? I'm always careful on that one. I think we have to balance the need for some practice with students with also the need to be thoughtful about not scaring students or having them engage in things developmentally that are going to be, you know, more stressful than they're worth and honestly may not be as effective as practice in that way. But our teachers need to know what to do. And certainly But our teachers need to know what to do, and certainly need the skills to be able to take a few key steps. I don't know if you're in Alice District or what your current protocols are, but I think those are really important. You know, I also think just making sure we're working together, again, with folks on the municipal side, but also with any sort of outside consultants that you engage with, to just periodically review what's happening and look at the structure and see, are there places that feel less secure that we need to work on and invest in? And, you know, I come from a district where we have some really old buildings with very bad sight lines, right? So entrances that aren't so great, and trying to figure out what do we do about those things, too. It's not fun to think about any of that, and I think it's part of the job and it's really important. I've had some experiences with various types of threat situations, and I think the things that I hold on to are, you know, one, the importance of really clear, very calm communication in the moment, and, you know, two, making sure that there's a lot of after the fact additional communication so that people know kind of what happened, how it went, and what are we going to do next time.
Thank you. What will be your approach for attracting, developing, and retaining staff at key leadership levels? How do you approach hiring those who will work closely alongside you to run the district?
I actually, I really enjoy that part of the job, to be honest about that. I think it's, whenever we bring someone into the organization, there's two things that happen, you know? One is that someone gets to sort of be part of this place, whatever this place is, but we also get to learn something from that person, whatever perspective or experience or kind of background they bring to the table, sort of expands what we do here. So in terms of who we look for, I think it's a trap that you can fall into easily is looking for people who are always a good fit, that sort of seem to slot right into where you are. Instead, I really think to be a great district, you need to be able to look for people that are going to push you a little bit, kind of bring something new. And I think we do that by looking at their experience and background, and also sort of their thinking and kind of who they are as a person. We've had, just for example, a building leader in our district who came from the charter school world. And it's a very different world than to regular public school, and the things that that individual has brought to the team are remarkable. But when we were going through the process, people raised that question, you know, is this going to be hard? And it's been wonderful. So I think that's a piece of the puzzle in terms of how you go about doing it. I think, you know, I've done the sort of boots-on-the-ground recruiting work, been out at job fairs and things like that. I kind of know the landscape pretty well of the State Superintendents Association at this point, so I know, you know, who's out there, who to call, who may have up-and-coming people, who are developing as leaders, but there's no spot in their district. I think we all understand throughout the Commonwealth that kind of cultivating leadership and giving people opportunities is really important. And so there is some kind of sense of collegiality. There is also a little bit of, you know, stealing people, too, that happens, to be frank. I think an important piece of this also is making sure that when you do bring people into the organization, that you give them support and that you give them a voice so that they feel like both they have kind of mentoring and coaching if they need that. And almost all of the folks we bring in, we assign a coach year one, so they have boots-on-the-ground experience with somebody outside who can kind of help them navigate inside. And in addition, just setting up team structures so that our leadership team all feel like they know they contribute to the process, even if they're brand-new. I've been part of that in my district, I've been part of sort of working on that in my district, and I would want to bring that with me here.
Thank you. Thank you, Winter. What values do you hold when starting and developing a budget? What experience do you have managing capital costs across multiple buildings in a school district? What actions would you take regarding the budget in weeks and months up to the town meeting?
Great. So I think, you know, the budget priorities need to reflect the values of the district and also the strategic priorities of the district. Oftentimes, in most times and places, there is a couple of things at play. You know, first of all, what does class size look like? What do our ratios look like for students and teachers? And are those falling within guidelines? And that is almost always where we start because that is kind of the core of things. That's where instruction happens, and we want to make sure that kids and teachers are kind of having the opportunity to connect in communities that, of a size that makes sense on a regular basis. Kind of above and beyond that, it's sort of programming and program development related to those strategic priorities that you have. Now, in terms of process, I mean, I'm going to do the capital part last, if that's all right. Let me talk about process first. I think really the budget process starts very early in the fall. And I'm not, I've heard a little bit about process here, and I can just talk to you about what I'm used to and why I think it's been helpful. We've worked in a community where there's a steering committee comprised of representation from the school committee and school district alongside the town and select board that work together very early in the fall to get a picture of the wider universe of municipal finance. What are we looking at in terms of kind of a range of where the percentage is for growth if it's available in a given year? So that there's a target. Doesn't mean we're going to meet that target, it just means we know what we're grappling with and what the town is grappling with. I think going in eyes wide open about the context of the financial situation in town is important. You don't want to set things up where we kind of ask for the world and then are not granted it all the time. And it's also not great to kind of go out and try and ask for something that's going to undermine the town as a whole, because really, it's the whole town's project to care for the schools. We need to kind of keep everything in balance to a certain degree. So kind of figuring out where is that ballpark number that we have to work with is a really critical part of the process. Engaging with all of the kind of cost center leaders throughout the district and having them really put forward a state of the school, state of the department. What does it look like right now? You know, what are the, what would it take to open the doors and be in the same place next year? What are some emerging needs that they are seeing? You know, what would they like if they could have it? And what are they willing to trade off? You know, where is there room for making some sort of swaps and creases, kind of reductions in one place to afford something you really want? I think getting that all on the table is a process in the mid-fall. And then prioritization, looking at kind of what is a thing district-wide that we need to have in place in order to just open the doors? What's something that we need in order to provide a level of services that we think meets our values and that helps us move forward? What are the things we'd like to have to kind of push forward, really to innovate and do exciting things in the district? And then trying to figure out what's the package that makes the most sense. You know, that's really the work of the district-wide leadership team, and to a certain degree, the district office team, to put that together, keep reflecting it back, and make sure we're communicating with you all. Of course, it's a lot of back and forth that the school committee involved in this, including upfront, a sense of what have you heard? Where are you, because you're out there in the community in different ways. Where are you hearing the need for us to do some work? And what are the priorities that are reflected from the community to us? Finally, on the capital front, I think the challenge of capital tends to be that there's sort of a fixed amount that you're allotted and that in no way necessarily corresponds with the cost of projects, right? So you have to kind of be creative. Thankfully, you can roll it over year to year and make a plan over the arc of time. So most of what I've seen that works effectively for capital is to have sort of a budget that's subdivided into different components, like we have some money for roofing, we have money for copiers and other types of equipment, we have money for vehicles. We set it aside in those pots and sort of let those accumulate over time and then target different projects that arise either through emergency or things that we'd like to get at proactively before they become emergency. That's the ideal. I think one thing I'd be really curious about and want to dig into right away is what does the capital situation look like? From everything I could see, your buildings appear to be extraordinarily well-maintained and cared for. I think that's great, but, you know, buildings get old and they have needs, and so trying to figure out what are the most urgent needs and where do we need to spend our time and money? Usually those budgets run about a five-to-10-year span, too.
Most unfortunate for us is they have roofs.
Absolutely. New ones, not easy, I don't know.
Was there anything else you wanted to add for that?
No, no.
Okay. Great. Okay. How do you handle criticism of the district or your own performance, particularly when it's shared publicly, like maybe during a school committee meeting or on social media?
In the newspaper?
Yeah.
Filthy kind of. I mean, it's funny, I don't know if I said this to you all, I might have said it to the staff. I was a middle school principal for nine years. You get pretty used to sort of taking whatever comes your way in that time period. Kids are fairly unfiltered in their view of your decision-making. I don't know, I mean, I think one of the things about criticism that comes at you unexpectedly is it can feel very hard in the moment, and I think it's important to take a moment to try and hear what's going on behind it. Is there fear and anxiety behind it? Because often that is the case. I assume, I try really hard to assume that when most people come up and speak, if they come to public speak, if they, you know, call and are escalated on the phone with me, it's because they're worried about something, and often it's about their child, their own child. And we have to kind of acknowledge that, try our best to sort of figure out what's behind it. And if we can find any point where there's something I can offer that person that doesn't undermine the values of the system, that doesn't undermine kind of my responsibility to all children, then I try to do that. But the hard part is sometimes I can't, and I think I need to be clear and honest but kind about that. I want to make sure that everyone feels that they can express what they need to express. I will also say this, I'm not particularly inclined to have people be kind of rude or disrespectful to anyone. I try very hard not to be that way, and I think if a person can't sort of manage themselves in a sort of way that's civil, I have no problem telling them that I think this conversation is unproductive and we need to maybe resume it at another time. So, thank you.
Almost there. If you are the next superintendent of Westboro Public Schools, what would be your top three priorities during your first 60 days and why?
I think first of all, it's about relationships. I think my responsibility would just to be to really sort of establish strong working relationships with, you know, the leadership team, with the union, with the school committee, with our town municipal partners. Really be out there, getting to know people and understanding who they are, kind of what they bring to the table, helping them get to know me. It's very hard to do this work without trust, and you don't build trust if you don't have a relationship. I, you know, fortunately, like almost everybody, and so that's fun for me. I like getting out and meeting people and seeing what they're about. So I think that's a big piece. I think another piece for my first 60 days is just gathering information, really sort of looking at the district with another pair of eyes, you know? Coming from the outside is helpful. I watch that happen in my own district with new leaders as they come in, being able to notice things that are hard to notice when you've been in a place for a while. And I have really appreciated that deeply as someone who's been in my district for many, many years. So I would want to do that, to sort of note things and notice them, reflect them back, and make sure I'm noticing them correctly. And thirdly, I think being able to sort of take that information and think about what are the implications moving forward. So, you know, you asked right at the start about, you know, things that needed improvement or challenges that needed attention. You know, I think that takes time to really uncover what the real things are, what the big things are, and I would want to find those and try and help find ways to move forward on them. Chances are, you already know what they are, so it's not going to be a big secret, but I would want to think a lot about how does that dovetail with what's happening in terms of the existing strategic plan? Is that a plan that looks like everything's there that needs to be there? Do we need to look at some additions or revisions or modifications? So those are really kind of parts of it. You know, how do you gather information? I would want to spend a lot of time in schools, out in the classrooms, seeing instruction happening firsthand. I don't think you can really understand a school unless you spend time in classrooms. And I'll tell a funny story. During the staff forum, I talked about this a little bit, and there was a staff member who raised her hand and said, you know, basically said, kind of called me to task, said, you know, I just need to tell you, you know, you better mean what you say about that because the superintendent we've had here, and I've experienced several, has done that for real, and you have big shoes to fill, big shoes to fill if you come here. So I, you know, duly noted. I was very happy that this individual spoke up. She was clearly very passionate and very sincere, you know, really indicated she hadn't always agreed with the superintendent, but that she respected the fact that the person...
Oh, I did it again.
She respected the fact that there was somebody who had bothered to actually be there, out in the classrooms observing, so that they were speaking from a place of actual experience, not just from numbers, you know, like MCAS scores and things like that. I'm going to try and find that.
Or you can just grab another microphone that's there, too. Sorry, you can just put up another one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So let's do this one instead. No.
How's that? All right, great. Fantastic. All right. I think that's, I think...
I think that answers the question. It's kind of relationships, evidence, and then prioritization of what needs to happen. And I think that the way of doing that is going to be a lot of boots-on-the-ground. I'm probably going to get a lot, a lot of exercise.
Okay. Thank you so much for coming here today. We just want to know, do you have any questions for the committee or if you want to make any closing remarks?
That's great. I would love to ask a couple of questions, if you don't mind. You know, I think I have some sense of this, but I'd really love to hear from you, you know, something that you think you value about this that makes you, you know, you all chose to be here, you chose this position, you're here sort of working on behalf of the schools. And so my assumption is there's a good reason for that, and the reason has to do with something you care about, about this system that matters a lot to you. So I would love to know what that is.
So aside from, you know, excellence in education, which I think is really important, I think for me, I actually grew up in this town, and I went to the schools. I attended all the way from elementary through the high school. I have seen the face of the town change completely. It is not the town that I grew up in, and we have, we're so blessed to have so many types of people moving into the town. We have a very diverse community, we have all types of learners, which we embrace and we value very much. And I, you know, it's really important to me that somebody comes in who shares those values and is able to continue the work that our existing superintendent has done to make sure that all the children feel very included and that there's access for everyone.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm, so I didn't grow up here. I've only lived here for seven years, but I moved here with my family specifically because of the schools. And so I'm up here in this chair because of the schools, because of my kids who are home watching. Hey, Arlo, hey, Violet. Give them a shout-out. So, you know, I consider this a very important role because of what we're doing here, and, you know, we have, we, the members of this committee have a really important opportunity to choose the person who can take this district into even bigger and better. And, you know, we have, we, the members of this committee have a really important opportunity to choose the person who can take this district into even bigger and better places. And yeah, I mean, I guess that's basically why I'm here, because there's an opportunity to really make a difference in a district. And, you know, I'm confident that whoever we choose will have a wonderful chance to really make a big difference in the district.
I'm going to give you two answers to your question, one general and one specific. In high school, I enjoyed high school civics to the point where we all have an obligation to serve. And as a result of that, in New England, as you know, we have town meeting form of government, which allows everyone to come and have their say. I took that to heart. I've been serving this town for almost 50 years, and in the last 20, I've served as a member of the school committee. As part of that, actually, as part of, I guess, the service and certainly watching what goes on in the town, our children, a son and a daughter, had the opportunity to go to this school system and have performed very well and have had an outcome, if you will, based on their education, which is, for us, very satisfying. My son is chair of the physics department at Williams, and my daughter's a physician, and this town allowed that to happen. And so this is part of my feedback to the community for the services that the school system provided to our family. And my interest is to make that possible for as many people who live in this town as I can. And so I'm still here. Thank you.
The reason I ran for school committee is just to continue the good things that I saw when my daughter was young, attending the schools. I am a former teacher. I still work in education, so I know good teaching and learning when I see it and hear it and feel it. And I saw that in the schools and wanted to make sure that the good work that was happening was continuing. And also, this town is phenomenal with service and giving back and giving to each other and being generous, and so I saw this as a way to give back to the town.
Great question. I'm one of many people that I think joined this town in the last, I would guess, 10, 20 years, that moved here primarily because of the school system. I moved here, and I moved here not knowing really anything about the town. The only thing I cared about was education for my sons. I have three boys. They're in the school system right now. And that's what drew me into Westboro, and I made a great choice. Now that I'm looking at it closely, I'm, you know, I'm confident that this was a good choice. What I want to say, what drove, what gave me the impetus to be here is really a way to say thank you to the town, to the district in particular, in the way it treated my son, who needed services for several years. And I know the experience that similar children receive in different districts in our state, and it's not the same. I was, my family was very fortunate, and I wanted to, this was my way I could say thank you to the taxpayers and to the district for all the effort that was put to my son's success. And so that's my way of giving back.
Thank you. Thank you. It's just nice to hear. I mean, I know that people claim that the superintendency is not an easy role. School committee is not an easy role right now, and I think that sort of service is important and just, and also, I think kids need models of it, of what it means to give back to community, what it means to engage in kind of civil discourse and sometimes disagreement about what the right thing to do is on behalf of schools or on behalf of the town. Hopefully, we can kind of start a movement here. I'll just sort of wrap up by thanking you really profoundly for the opportunity. I've enjoyed my time in education so much. I mean, I loved being a classroom teacher. I was a seventh and eighth grade English and social studies teacher, and I think that's really, at my core, what keeps me coming back, that sort of sense that the process of helping every student learn is a really interesting and challenging thing. Like, doing that well takes a tremendous amount of work. Just when you think you've got it figured out, the universe throws something new and exciting at you, like, you know? Usually, it's about technology or some sort of social trend you weren't expecting. And I think that that's this incredible thing. It's a gift to have a job that doesn't get boring. And I think, you know, in building leadership, I had the opportunity to kind of really influence the sort of vision and direction of a school, to think about, you know, what are the messages we're sending kids? How do we help teachers learn to work together on behalf of everybody? How do we kind of create a community where there's a real professional investment in getting better? And I really continued that in the assistant superintendency with a particular focus inside the organization, kind of working with teachers, working with administrators. How do we continue to grow and improve, even in a really good district? And so I'm excited about the opportunity to sort of step into this next thing and really engage the whole community in the project. It seems like you have a community that's really deeply interested in that, and so that's, that feels like a great connection and possibility to me. So I very much appreciate your time. I know you've got a big decision ahead of you, so I don't want to take more than my fair share here. And it's been a long week and a long evening for you. So with deep gratitude, I appreciate the opportunity and have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Why don't we take a short break, I guess, and come on back in about five minutes or We've received additional data, if you will, from the results of Monday night's survey, which we got this morning. And so that, as well as other queries that we have out there in terms of references and stuff, which are still potentially to come in in the meantime. And so on that basis, I would like to ask the committee to consider recessing this meeting until Monday night, for us then to deliberate on who we would choose as a superintendent. So I guess I would make that a motion.
I'll second.
Very good. What, we already have it posted, I think, correct?
We do. We had it posted just as a just-in-case, but it sounds like it's a, it's something we want. This is just a lot, you know, it's three hours of meeting with these folks who are very talented, very strengths, all of them have strengths for this position. And I feel like I need more time to digest what happened tonight, the survey data. Thank you to everyone who filled that out. We have tons of it to look at. And I think we need time to finish up looking at that, considering what we heard tonight. And just to remind everyone, I know a lot of you are tuning in and watching these interviews tonight and watched the forum on Monday night, but we've already had a first-round interview with all of these folks, so that happened a couple of weeks ago. We have had, they had a day on Monday where they visited the district, spent a lot of time in our schools. We got a lot of feedback from faculty and staff. So a lot of people have had a lot of eyes on these three brave candidates who are putting themselves out there, and I think we need time to put all that feedback together in a comprehensive package.
And I guess just a couple of other pieces of information, which, you know, may or may not be known. We started out with 34 candidates, and as a result of the process, ended up with the three candidates you heard tonight. We are lucky to have had that spread of people to analyze and review. And as you might guess, in the process of looking at perhaps 20 or 30 pages of data for each individual, it's a pretty focused process. And again, to do this justice and to do it right, you know, we need the need to, or do have the need to, the remaining information that's coming forward and analyze what the results of last Monday were. So with that, that's the basis behind the concept of recess, to allow us time to do that and meet again Monday. And I'm not sure where. Is it here or?
I don't know.
Okay. We'll have to check that.
We'll figure it out.
But wherever it will be, certainly, it'll be on the tube, and, you know, we'll finish the process. So with that, I think I'll recess this meeting.
Do we vote to recess?
Yeah, we do. Well, the motion was made. It was seconded, and so now we need to vote the motion, and then the opportunity would be to recess by motion as well. So at this point, all those in favor of recess? Okay, it's 5-0-0. All those in favor of meeting Monday to complete the process, wherever it was posted. Thank you.
Did a great job.
With that, I think we're good. Thank you all.
Thank you for coming, everyone. Thank you.